Call the regular city council meeting to order June 7th, 2022. Are there any additions to the agenda? Citizen comments?
Um, I just wanted to update you guys. I don't know if you know, um, the county commission did donate the fifty-five thousand dollars to the child, uh, the childcare committee, so, um, we will be moving forward with, with the plans of the St. John's, locations and, um, we're feeling pretty eager to get all of that done. We have, um, an infographic. I put it out here on the door. I don't know if Kathleen's posted it yet. But now it's just gonna be the process of, you know, finding the, the volunteers and the time and the, um, items, I guess, that will need to, to get the, the project complete and then, um, help fill what's needed for the daycares and also the existing daycares if they're in need of anything. So. Good news on that front. Can I have them on the agenda?
Okay. Uh, David Powell, discussion on possible development?
Yes. Um, Stafford County came across my radar as a possibility to do some, uh, housing development, basically rentals. Um, quite a few rentals. I'm based out of McPherson. I've just finished up eighteen units in Sterling, Kansas. You can believe that, eighteen units there. Um, we know there's a need in smaller communities for these kind of things. What I need from, I guess, the city is what alleviates my risk coming to a smaller town, what fees might be waived, what help can I get to build here? I think you all, I don't know, did you pass out that site plan to everybody?
Yep, they should have it.
I think you've seen kind of initially what I would think to do here, phase one wise. Four two-bedroom units in one location. It's economical to build. Um, it's economical to maintain one site versus four other sites around when I'm this far away. It's a little further away than I want to be, but I, if the, if the need is here and, uh, things work out, I would be definitely interested in moving forward with something. Any questions anybody has for me or whatever else?
Some of the things that I've discussed with him, um, obviously we take part in the revitalization that he can go through with the county. Um, some things that we've worked on with, um, economic development itself is like the sewer tap fees. I was gonna take it to Land Bank to maybe see if they wanted to donate the property. It's not like they, we, we, it's, we don't sell it for an ungoshly amount anyways, so, those were just some of the things that I've tried to come across to, to help, um, help him make his decision and to coming.
Right. I mean, that's basically, when I went into Sterling, that was land bank land I initially took out of the first one. Well, my second project, I bought land, um, from an owner there. I've actually bought three more lots over there as well for some, some housing over there as well.
And that is one of the biggest benefits in our community, and if the first location does go well, is we do have the opportunity for even number two, maybe even number three, so.
Can you give us any idea on what kind of initiatives that they gave you at, like, other towns you've done this in or?
Um, initially, initially got land bank land is what I'm looking for, or I'm, I'm looking to alleviate my, as much risk as I can initially, you know, you're spending quite a bit of money, to put in, you know, four, I put in ten initially, so I was putting in more. They did waive sewer tap fees, they waived water tap fees, they did electrical fees for nothing on my first project. After that, I paid a portion of those for any additional projects. You know, that's the last one. You know, there's been other projects where I've gone in and they've done everything every time. So, I mean, it's basically what the city is willing to do, how much they're willing to give to alleviate some risk to come into a smaller town like this, to build something.
What, uh, what are our fees for water and sewer tap?
I don't know that we have water. Sewer tap's like two hundred and fifty, I think.
I think it is, yeah.
It's not.
They're both two fifty, aren't they, water and sewer both?
They're not a lot.
For like new construction for a time?
Yeah, new construction.
Yeah, for, yeah, but
I don't know.
On the, on the sewer, we have a bond on the sewer that you have to, you know, you have to put the bond out and then tap it and then make sure that it's right and you get it back.
Sure, sure.
The electric, we don't have any.
Yeah.
Clear up to the transformer.
Most of those land bank properties have utilities already.
Yeah, and most of them are already ready to go. So, I mean, the, our biggest, our biggest option is.
I mean, I would, I, whatever we do on that stuff, I would, I would be willing to give, give that and probably, you know, have him fill out a building permit, but not charging for the building permit.
Right.
That stuff's been waived before as well.
Yeah, and stuff like that. I mean, and I'm pretty sure, you know, I'm not sure what this would cost to build. Doesn't really make any difference, but I'm pretty sure our land bank would probably donate that property.
This is, we have ours, right, our property?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, well, yeah, it's the land, it's the land bank.
That was a piece that she showed me that was on the land bank. I threw it on there. It's the main and.
Yep, south.
Yeah, south.
Yeah, property.
He had come up and we drove around and kind of just looked at, uh, potential properties and what would, what would work, so.
How far would you want to go on the electric? Clear up to the meter service, to build the meter service and install the meter service? How far would you want to go? You know, at this point, we give the can and the hub and, and that stuff, but we don't do the installing.
Yeah, I mean, are you okay with that?
Oh, yeah, I don't have a problem with it.
We usually, we need housing.
Yeah, I know.
Yeah, yeah, I, yeah.
Talking about a thousand dollars or four thousand dollars on maintenance.
Yeah.
Yeah, housing in this community is desperate.
As far as clear up to the disconnect and hanging it on there, sure, yeah?
Yeah.
Yeah.
We've got most of the material to do it anyway. I mean, you know. So, yeah.
Yeah. I'd be all for waiving all them fees and doing that.
Okay. Well, what I'd probably do is take a, initially, take, if you're talking about the land, I'd take a first right refusal on that property so that if I'm gonna spend time and develop and put together a plan and a strategy for it, I don't want that piece to be gone when I come in here to say, hey, I'm ready to go and it's gone. I can get with whoever. I've got drafts of first right of refusal for a piece of property, basically for maybe like sixty days. Allow me to plan out and make sure everything, if sixty days I don't pull a permit or whatever it is before then, then it would revert right back to the, you know, it's void. It stays in the land bank.
We've basically done that for economic development for two and a half years.
Yeah, right.
I, I'm pretty sure the land bank would be more than willing to go for that.
And I could, like I had talked to you, I can put it in the newspaper for, so that thirty days starts whenever we need it to.
Do we have to do that if we're donating?
It's not clear, so we've just been doing it.
Just to cover the city's fine quarters?
Well, the Minnesota statute just requires publication before the land bank sells the property, so.
But we've been notifying people just with.
Just for the measures.
Yeah. Just to cover?
Right.
What do we have with next land bank meeting?
The next ca- the second to next.
So, the first of July?
I just don't know.
Someday.
I read it somewhere.
But we could actually, I mean, if you publish that, we could essentially have it taken care of the first of July. I mean, we could take care of everything else prior to that.
I think if I could see that, basically, put together, hey, this is what we're willing to do. Waiving tap fees, meter to this, you know, meters can set at, at the residence as well, all that stuff. If you can put together a list of that stuff, then I know where I'm gonna be cost-wise into this thing. I mean, that's basically, I can, I can weigh everything out.
We can do like a memory and understand you want to vote on the next council meeting and then you can present this land bank. The land bank can craft meetings, like St. John's is not a member outside of the elected council. So, it is.
So, it'd have to be voted on separately.
Yeah, yeah.
But this is your president.
Yeah.
Yeah, well, I, what I've come across is most small communities, St. John's is probably, but it would be one of the, it would be the smallest community I would go into. Has a real need for it. I mean, you hear stories about teachers in the high school that live thirty miles away because they can't find places and other things like that. I mean, it's happening all over the place.
Yeah, I think we can put something together and get it.
Put a list together for next council meeting. Land bank is win, beating this win?
Well, the one that we could probably approve to, we could probably do it sooner and just not take it back until the bit. I mean, we could get.
Effective on publication.
Effective on publication, get you a sixty or ninety day first right of refusal.
And, and I, yeah.
Cause we could have a quick meeting prior to that to go ahead and approve it and then he would have it about the same time as next council meeting, along with the city stuff.
Which is the first week in July, so, I mean, the first council meeting?
Uh, we'll have, well, we'll have another one. I think we could have everything the two weeks from tonight, first and third Tuesdays.
First and third Tuesdays of every month.
So, David, just curious, these fourplexes or whatever you're building, is that like income-based or is that age-based?
That is market-based at this point. I do not get any government subsidies.
I've, I've been down that road in one other project and it was, it was a nightmare for me.
Sure, yeah. So, there's a price and you pay that price?
Right, their market rate.
Twenty-year-old or fifty-year-old, don't get any difference.
Doesn't matter how much you make, whatever their market, the market rate.
Yeah, yeah.
So, it's basically tabled towards people, young families starting out, people moving here for a job or something like that. And, and hopefully, these are the people that get in the community and then they buy a house down the road that somebody else maybe is building a house or is moving into a rest home or whatever, basically. It's just, that's what we're looking for, entry-level people into your community.
Yeah, I'd just say whatever we need to do to help.
Right.
So, we'll just get that together?
Right. Yeah. City target metal?
Yes.
Do you want one of the cards that I have?
No, because.
It's president of council meeting.
You wanna know something? Can't put that in my office. Do you know how much those chairs are?
So, I think we'll get everything together and have it ready for next council meeting, get it all put together and Jamie can get it to you prior to.
Okay.
And we'll try to, I'll try to get a land bank meeting before then as well, so we can go ahead and approve it pending publication.
Are you gonna drop the ninety day? Do you want me to send a copy that I have, if used before?
If you want to, I'll put together, we'll put together a list of the fees and everything, council will always have a list.
Okay. I will, I'll email you that. What I've used before is pretty, I mean, basically, if I don't act within a certain amount of time, it's, go right back to the land bank.
And really, what, what'll happen is land bank can make their motion based on.
That ninety days of coming to the land bank, creating a whole issue.
And like, I don't think you guys are marketing anything right now anyways, are you?
No.
Just just walk these by.
Yeah.
I mean, it's just.
Probably not to let us inside.
The only marketing we do for the land bank, like I have it all listed out on the website, but I don't think I have the new ones on there.
Anything else for David? We'll get that stuff put together and get in contact with you.
Do you have what?
Consent agenda, approve the minutes, regular council meeting, May seventeenth, twenty twenty-two.
I'd maybe listen to approve the.
Meeting minutes for.
Get a motion, get your second. Get a second, eight more discussions. All in favor? All opposed, motion carries. Appropriation ordinance six, seven, twenty, twenty-two, and then the amount of a hundred and one thousand four hundred and fifty-eight dollars and twenty-nine cents.
I'd make a motion, I don't approve. Appropriation ordinance six, seven, twenty-two, a hundred and one thousand four hundred and fifty-eight dollars.
Have a motion, we'll have a second. Eight more discussion, all in favor. Sure. Motion carries five oh. Department head, Jeff.
Can I skip for a minute?
Yeah.
What you do, Jason?
Jason, water department out there.
Well, main thing, not much on the water, wastewater. We're kind of, uh, going to the streets. We're waiting on the weather to cooperate here so we can start. Pulling some ditches that kind of came to a halt. And, uh, I was, the main thing I was wanting to ask you guys, my good, is you guys are okay with about five thousand dollars worth of AB three for me to give? And I can start putting a little bit after I pull these ditches, I can start looking on the road with the, with the dirt and mud. And so, I can, I, due to Bobby being so busy, I can't, I haven't had time to talk to him, but I figured half that or a quarter of that would be hauling to anywhere. So, that's why I was wanting to get around five thousand. He started getting me, I did pile it against, and I could start getting dirt roads a little bit better. So, that's what I was hoping I could get, sure. And get it word when he has gotten together. The way, the way it's talking.
Separate.
Gonna be just a little bit.
Oh, yeah, we do have a pair of.
Anything wrong with the budget?
What'd you say, Jason?
Five thousand.
Dollars worth of AB three. Eighty-three, yeah. I'd make a motion for Jason to purchase five thousand dollars worth of AB three.
Have a motion. Second. Any more discussion? All in favor? Carries five oh.
Other than that, that's about all we got going on. Try to get some odds and ends done, while it's wet. Cool.
You guys got any questions for Jason?
Are we still waiting on the water tower permit?
Water tower permit is a yes, but I called, uh, I called Matt up there and he says that they have a, uh, engineer working for him now, and he's gonna try to get him sicked on the state and see if he can't get this going. So, that's a plus. So.
Okay.
As of now, it's still open air.
Still good for drying streets?
Soon as we get some warm weather. We need, uh, we need to get some hot weather on those streets so we can. If we don't, it's just gonna chew up teeth on that milling machine and it's just gonna throw chunks out there and we're not gonna have much. And I do want to ask that other question about the millings. Could we go ahead and sell some of those so we can have some more room down by the light plant? Or what do you guys wanna say that last year's and this year's and for the truck parking?
That's, that's the last thinking on top of that big rock, I think, is what we thought of that. Hopefully, that's.
We're gonna have, we'll have a bit more, so we'll have to see if we can't put it somewhere. So, we'll see.
We have room down there.
Down here at the plant? It's, yeah, we're just gonna cover up some more area there. We'll just have to figure out a place where it'd work for everybody.
What's, uh, do we have someone parting that up there?
Knock the area where the truck parking is, around the. There's a brown line.
Right. What's on there, how about it? Or Miller? I just wonder if there's a place out there we could pile some of that so when the time comes, it's not being hauled.
Right, I agree.
Hauled twice.
Yes, you might look up there, Jason, and see what's maybe.
Can you, are, can a person mix that in with that rock and just start blading that back and forth end with the rock and then pack it at the same time? Cause then if you could, then, then a person could just pile it in there and start dragging it with the rock, maybe.
I think it's just gonna fall apart.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know. I don't mix it with that big rock. I think you'll probably have to put that big rock out and then put it over the top. That's what I was.
Well, we'll see what we can put out there. If not, we'll have to just go out here.
I would say just put it somewhere close to out there. That way we could, I don't know, surely there's a spot somewhere that.
Pile it up so Dale doesn't have to move it all.
Double.
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, we'll see what we can do.
I mean, it's not like Marshes that all the time.
Yeah. I know since the all the price, if you can put it out there somewhere close. Five dollars for fuel. Anything else for Jason? Electric department, Jeff.
I have an apology first. When you gave me the money to build that trailer, we went over about three hundred dollars because I forgot about the tax. So, I wanna apologize for that. But the trailer's done, we're using it. It's, uh, setting down the plant if you wanna drive by and look at it.
Is it working how you?
Works like we intended it to do. So, anyway, we, of course, with, uh, and the camera guys are here, so I got, I got the bucket truck with them, getting receptacles down to poles and helping them get their equipment mounted and that stuff. They come out with an eighteen-foot pole and a ladder and that's the way they were gonna do it. So, we thought we'd speed it up a little bit, keep somebody from getting killed, just go ahead and get them done. So, um, the other thing is, I finally did get the, today, I finally got the, the caps for the four-inch underground so we can go ahead and pull it uh, on the other project and get it terminated on both ends. I got a real rude awakening last Friday. I called, uh, T and R Electric in Coleman, South Dakota. I've bought hundreds of transform, transformers from them over the years and I, because I knew that if we stuck all these transformers in where we've got this pipe buried at this time, that we would have no spares. And so, I called them to price some transformers and see what the waiting period was on them and, and, uh, twenty-five to fifteen to twenty-five KVA is what we normally use. I bought four last year. I bought one for the truck park and then another one for something. Two of that size and then two smaller ones and they, the big ones were eight hundred and fifty dollars and the small ones were seven and a quarter or seven fifty, I can't remember. For a twenty-five KVA transformer at this point in time is forty-three hundred and forty dollars, and they're sixty weeks out. So, it's kind of put, uh, it's, it's almost put enough fear in me that I really don't want to take all the spares that I have and put over there at Fisher's and down through there at this time. I wanna get the ground shaped back up where everything's ready to go and cleaned up and then just kind of ride this thing out a little bit, if that's all right. I just, if I don't have a spare, I'm in trouble. I mean, I've got enough of these out now that I, I need to have at least one spare and maybe two or three. So, you know, I never thought of them climbing like that. I mean, it just, it just, uh, it ruined the whole show, so. I mean, we're in a good position where the pipe is already in. We can put the ground back to original. And then the hard part's over anyway. It's just a matter of fish in the water, sticking them in, so. Now, if we have a catastrophic failure over there and we have to set a pole or something, we'll just have to do what we need to do and see if we can ride this thing out a little bit. I have one that needs to go in for repair. I don't trust it sitting it back up there. I might take it to, to Newton. It'll cost more money to get it done over there, but it can be repaired and have it back in about eight weeks. So, that'll give me one, but, you know, if they want it to truck park, we'd go bang. It's way bigger than what these house transformers are. And so, I couldn't, I couldn't accommodate that if I had, you know, if something happened, so. I just would've never thought it would've went this way, but it sure did, so. I imagine the big companies are getting their, getting their, all the transformers they want and us little guys are just gonna have to sit and wait. That's just the way it is, so. Anyway. But, um, other than that, we just, like I said, we've been helping the, the, the guys on the cameras and been working back and forth with cable TV on some stuff, getting it buried, getting it in the air and some of that too, so. And then the rain kind of slowed us down like it did everybody else, but we're ready to pull wire soon as it dries up, so, anyway. Oh, Midstates was here a week ago. We got some more conduit in and I'm, I'm hoping that the guys will be back this week, whether they will or not, but they kind of talked like once they really got to rolling that they would stay here till they got done, so I'm hoping that they'll be back this next week, so.
Probably not too many transformer suppliers in the area?
There's only three that I know of. There's them in South Dakota, there's Solomon, and then there's Midwest over at Newton are the only three that I know of. And they're all in the same shape, one of them, yes. But I've, I've bought some transformers from a guy over at Newton several times and, and I've gotten to be pretty good friends with him. And usually, if I need to squeeze one in, well, he can squeeze one in and get it through for me, so. Uh, I was supposed to take it over, uh, about six weeks ago. We got busy and I forgot about it. I just didn't get it delivered, but maybe way longer now, I don't know, so. If it's a pole mount, I've got pole mounts running out my nose, but I just don't have anything for underground at all. And no place that I can swipe one, you know, that's not being used, so.
Any big, any other questions for Jeff? Says Jeff, you need to purchase one and then wait for it, or what, what do you think?
The price that they give me is a quoted price that they'll take for it. I just couldn't see paying four hundred percent. It just, it shocked me so bad. I just didn't feel like the council would wanna do it and I'm sure not. I, I don't wanna do it. I just got a feeling that this is gonna get leveled out, but it's gonna take some time, you know? But, uh, and like I said, you know, the hardest part's done. The pipe's in the ground, the wire can be pulled anytime. And everybody, nobody's losing any service the way it is. It's just a matter of getting the ground put back and getting it leveled up and getting it ready and then just covering them up and just letting them sit, so. You know, I'd like to go partway, you know, I might try and go partway, I'll see how things go, but, um, I don't wanna, I, I, I know what happened the last time that I didn't have one and I stole one from a house that was being built. I took it over and put it in cause I was waiting on another one and I, and I don't have any place to steal one now. That's the problem. And I've got them strung clear out, clear out the Joe Corwell's. I mean, you know, we've got several in town now. I, I'd like to get lined up to maybe do some more. Uh, at least the pipe, the underground part of the pipe and stuff, maybe this winter, to keep going, you know, on these type of projects where we can use them and get some stuff cleaned up, but boy, the transformer deal just, you know, we could go to buying cabinets and putting pole mounts in them, but the cabinets are tall and, you know, they stick up. And this stuff's, you know, out of the way and it sits down low where it doesn't really affect anybody, so. I just don't know. It just, it looks like a, it, it just looks like a terrible waste of, of, uh, revenue to, to pay that kind of money for them when, you know, we might, we're not in a terrible mind if we were, why, I'd try and think different, but I just know that these big companies are eating them up and they're kicking guys like me that want one or two or four. They're kicking you back down the road, you know?
The transformers like the customers right now, we have backups for them, like, say, the.
The pole mounts?
Well, what, like, like just for instance, the grocery store or any?
I do not have one for the grocery store. I have a spare, the, the transformers, like the big transformers at the school, they're pole mount transformers and they're in a cabinet. This one is not. It's a pad and up transformer. And, and if I had to, um, you know, we could build a set on the ground of pole mounts and build a fence around them if we had to. you know, we could build a set on the ground of pole mounts and build a fence around them if we had to. But the way it is now, no, it's strictly underground and that's the only one like it, so.
Merge situation, we could get by?
We probably, yeah, it'd take us a little bit, but we could make it work, I think, you know, so. Might not be the prettiest thing you ever saw, but I mean, I think we could get, you know, we could get some fence around it and make it work. So we wouldn't put them out for a long time. Might be a day or two, but, you know, I think we could get something put together, but, uh, you know, for years, we've bought those cabinets and put transformers in them. I mean, you'll see them set around town in different places and they set fairly tall, you know, but.
Pole mount transformers inside cases?
Yeah, and then we always kept some, you know? I keep a spare for the school. I keep a spare for the big old stuff out west of town, stuff like that, but, um, I've got another set of big pole mounts that we bought for out there at the gas plant. And then, you know, they folded up left and they're still hanging out there, but, um, I mean, it's the cost you, it's the price you pay for playing the game, so.
I was just making sure if we're that far out.
Yeah, that would be the only way, and we could do it, right? I'm sure we could. So might have to have your help and everybody else's get it done, but I think we can get it.
Uh, we just, we do that. We just need to have a new motion on the price for Sunflower Trailer, since it went over.
I'd make a motion to approve invoice of Sunflower Trailer sales for the Wire Reel Trailer for eight thousand three hundred seventy-six dollars and forty cents.
You got a motion?
Second.
The second. Any more discussion? All in favor? Motion carries for.
Thank you.
Anything else for Jeff? And Jason, we got you all covered. Please chief.
I'm gonna take care of Tori's. Um, they've been going all over the county. It sounds like, um, with stuff going on. I know she has been on the waiting list for the vehicle that she, um, sent the proposal out. Unfortunately, I don't know a ton. I just know that I need to bring it up because like I said, uh, I do know she said she's been on the waiting list for several months, um, with it. I don't remember, Kyle, I think I sent it to was it thirty-four thousand, um, at her account, so, or in, not in her account, but in the equipment reserve or or whatever, so, I mean, the money that has been set back, is there, if it is something that you guys wanna do? Um, I do know that it's being requested, um, since we do have four full-time officers having the fourth vehicle. Um, at first I didn't know if it, if it, if they were still thinking about getting rid of the Dodge. Um, but I did clarify today that it is because they have four officers and they would like four vehicles, um, just to make the, you know, I mean, right now is probably a good instance. There's a wreck and and we back up the county or, you know, they had several things going on at once, so I know it's just several of those things that, that come into play with having specified vehicles for each officer, so. There it is. I don't know what else she wants me to say, but there's more important things she's taking care of, so. Yeah, this is why I don't want ours. Take care of it. You probably know more than I do.
I talked to her a little bit about it, um, because I kinda asked her, you know, was it, did they have an issue with sharing and it's, it's like she said, you know, it's, it's kinda hard to share a vehicle if, you know, she could share hers with one of them, but if something major happens and she don't have a vehicle, then she's driving her personal vehicle and everything else.
And she's like.
She typically tries to go out if they got something big that goes on to assist me.
And she is like the supervisor, you know, you, you always wanna have a supervisor on call when it comes to law enforcement and she is our only supervisor in, in our agency right now, so. I mean, she literally is on the call if she's not up to, so. That's, and I know she does take your personal part of it, like, I know she has had to, so.
Can she mark one of us first and the other two, other three? Share the two?
I think, I mean, I think that's what they've done. I know that's what they did with Preston, I mean.
Yeah.
I mean, the Dodge is hers.
Somebody else's.
I mean, the Dodge is hers. I mean, we can table it and she can talk about it. I don't know that two weeks is gonna make her break it, but I didn't wanna knock.
I don't know how long they'll hold it though.
Right.
I mean, I don't, I have no clue. I didn't ask her that.
And it sounds like, I think they are working a code black, so I don't wanna bother. I don't think that we can do it very good.
Yeah, I, I get it. It would be nice to have everyone their own vehicle. I don't know if you can designate her to her own vehicle and maybe one of the other ones share it. You know, I've got along quite a while with it.
I think it wasn't bad at part-time. The only thing that I, what's their, how's their schedule set up? What are their?
Right now, it's not bad cause Mike's gone, but I don't know how it'll be when Mike's back.
But aren't they on twelve-hour shifts?
Shit changes here at, here at times or.
Yeah. Yeah, cause right now it's four-eight to four-eight.
So that could create a little bit of an issue for somebody. I mean, you'd have to make sure that whoever's coming on at four AM in the morning, you don't have their vehicle or you have to figure out a way at four AM to get it back to them and then find a way home at four AM. I mean, that could get. That could get kinda hectic for them, I mean. Cause you really don't wanna wake somebody up before a clock to get a ride home.
Jamie, you said they have the money in their, or at least probably in the reserve?
It's in the equipment reserve that we put back.
You said, is that what?
In the funds that are checking out. A lot of money going out right now.
There will be, the, the Durango that we purchased, I would obviously want it equipped, but I don't remember how much it's going to be.
We're almost at forty thousand, forty, low over forty thousand. And I don't, even with government discounts, I don't know what a new vehicle costs. I, I'm pretty sure you ain't gonna get one equipped for less than thirty. You know, I think you buy the vehicle for thirty.
Sure. My, your reservation is if something changes and we go back to having part-time people, I don't you're one sitting around all the time, I guess. I mean, hopefully that doesn't happen. You don't wanna think that way.
Sure.
I just think we'd be overstuffed at that point. It wouldn't be necessary.
Is that what your? Order in the other twenty twenty?
San Francisco F one fifty and nineteen. So we have fourteen Dodge and nineteen F one fifty and a twenty Durango maybe?
Where's the money in the one-one? We bought the, we bought the Durango and then we bought the Ford.
I thought we bought the Ford first.
We bought the.
I thought we bought the Ford first and we bought the Durango for the.
For following year, or the same year that we got the Ford, I think that Ford's a twenty. Twenty. There might, might be a twenty, twenty-one.
Yeah, I, I, I think it's a good deal on highway patrol vehicle. Next motions about, you know, whether, whether we need it right now, you know, like, I think it is a good deal, but I think it's a good deal as well.
That's for mileage, John?
Yeah, I think it's probably got less mileage than our Durango.
Wow, that's, yeah. For highway patrol vehicles.
The Ford and the Durango are both twenty-twenty.
I guess worst case scenario, if we did buy it, we did go back to part-time, we can always get rid of the, the old Dodge that just sell it off. I mean, every chief except for this one would want to sell it, trade it, get rid of it.
Yeah.
I mean, you could look at it that way as if it never went back and then you won't have one sitting around all the time.
Sure, I, sure.
I mean, it is by far the oldest one probably.
Still a lot of vehicles in there, you know, but. Yeah, two year, two years for sure. I, yeah, I, I see to where it's inconvenient at times, especially if there's something like a wreck.
Right.
At an odd hour of the night and you're screaming to get a vehicle if the plan changes.
It's, it's a need, but at what, what point do you say just it's not a need, but it's a convenient?
I didn't, I don't know.
It, it does look like a good need, but I.
No, I think just my opinion, I think we need to pass it around now, but. No, I think the buy would be a good one as far as value, what we would get.
Yeah, but.
I think it is a good buy, but with so much money going out right now, I think it's. I think I would have to pass it.
I'm good either way. Makes no difference. I mean, I see it off the side of it, so. And I can see where it'd be a benefit, but I also see that.
Yeah, I, you know, I kinda off the, see both sides. Well, important with the idea, I mean, this is a really good deal, but we should always find another one. I guess I would, would be my thought.
I think we could stay on, I, I mean, I, I don't see why we couldn't stay on that list. I don't, I mean, I don't know how it works essentially, but, I mean.
It's a need, but it's not a priority.
Right.
So, yeah.
And I, I mean, if she keeps her, her name in the hat, something else might come along. When it's a better, better opportunity for us to.
Better time for us to pay that purchase, right?
Anything else for Tori? Anything from the fire chief?
I don't hear from him really.
City administrator?
Oh, um, I guess I will say, um, Jubilee was Jubilee. I don't know, having the carnival was a change for everyone. Um, we had some major setbacks of like volunteers of the bouncy houses. You have to have a, a manned post at each one per state law. And we just really did not have volunteers. Um, I've tried to reach out to the carnival and I haven't got a response. Um, so we will be doing some extra checking throughout the year to find out. I didn't realize the carnival made or break, make or breaks the Jubilee, but it definitely, in my opinion, I mean, it was still good, but it definitely wasn't what it's been, so.
There are, uh, other carnivals out there that have schedules, but I didn't get a chance to look at some. I hope you might wanna check online and I, whatever I found off forward to you, maybe you can find something.
Yeah.
Uh, but, uh, yeah, there was a lot of disappointment from what I've heard unfortunately.
And, I mean, it's not just here. It's a lot of small towns. Like, I have a lot of the planners reaching out to me and they're, I mean, they're just distraught. We don't know what to do.
Right.
Because small towns don't make carnivals money. I mean,
Right.
we're a drop in the bucket compared to where they can go, so.
Yeah.
It's unfortunate, but that's just the truth.
Money? Anybody have any questions for Jamie?
Can you ask about title wars?
She'll email me back.
For the, uh.
For the property code violations, we were gonna go ahead and look at different companies to, um, do the title work up ahead, whether you're the last time.
Same process.
And I emailed.
Immediately come up with, check title.
Yeah, I emailed her. I'll try, I'll email her again tomorrow. She was out of the office when I emailed her, so.
You don't call me on this. I think they only charged a hundred, a hundred and twenty-five.
Yeah, it wasn't.
Who, who did we use?
It was Darcy, wasn't it?
First American Antichrist.
Darcy, yeah. So.
Is this a big fire, is that what it was?
They, they give us.
It was that report.
Yeah, it tells us who the record owners are.
Who has any interest.
Tax, or any kind of, any kind of, we have to, we have to provide notice first and then for those that we ended moving forward on before you guys went in and toured, touring it out, I can double check their work to make sure they have this.
It's like an ownership and then covered still?
It's like, it would be like if you were getting that owner's policy, title policy, except they're during the search, but not in sharing anything, but it's the same report.
Yeah, I know I paid for one and it was like a hundred fifty.
It just allows us to.
And she, and she did give us a discount, like, I mean, she didn't charge us full price since we had so many.
Yeah, it just kinda allows us to see if there's any complications on the title before we get too far into it. It worked out well last time.
Okay, anything else under Jamie? John?
I, I don't have anything additional.
Okay, any discussion under old business? New business?
Are we keeping the pool on? We still have some stuff in the pool?
I'd like to keep the pool on because it's not completely fixed and I have plans. I just haven't. That pool needs a lot. And I'd like to just keep it on there until we can propose what needs done and get it on there. Unless you want me to move it to my whiteboard? It's still up there.
It's fine, on that five hundred, just put a thing in check.
No, I mean, it's up and running. The chlorine's been giving us fits, but.
It's on the whiteboard.
It is on the whiteboard.
It's dirty screen, that's what we're doing with this.
Are you up for your executive sessions or do you wanna?
Yeah.
Can we do them together?
The first two, subject matters is the same.
Just today, what it'd be for ten minutes, ten minutes, ten minutes, hold on, make sure anybody.
No, I left. It was all piled up. They were grabbing, so somebody grab there. Um, you can ask Dale.
Mark has a copy of my letter. Somebody needs it.
I just wanna see it.
Well, that's not a.
Haven't we done so good up to now?
Very strange.
It's a lot of effort.
It is a lot. Biggest culprit of it.
Do you need ten minutes for each one or can you do them?
I just need the one, I mean, just five, just five.
Just five minute? Somebody wanna make a motion?
I'd make a motion for executive session regarding personnel matters of non-elected personnel to conduct employee performance to return at seven fifty-three to include, uh, the table and chief press.
I've got a motion.
Second.
Any more discussion? All in favor? We'll resume at seven fifty-three. Now, immediately back to order.
I would like to, uh, make a motion to promote Officer Michael Craven to sergeant with a dollar raise, bringing him to nineteen dollars and fifty cents with an evaluation to take place one year from tonight.
You got a motion on the table?
Second.
Second. Any more discussion? All in favor? Motion carries. And so.
And so. You want me to make that motion?
Can you?
I don't know, I'm still counseling. I'm still counseling. I'll make a motion for an executive session regarding personnel matters of non-elected personnel to discuss a potential hire to return at eight oh-five and to include-
I don't need to.
Table, yes, and Jeff.
Second.
Got a motion and a second, any more discussion? All in favor? We'll resume at eight oh-five. Call the meeting back to order. Um, there's no other business, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Hey Tori, do you want to talk about the vehicle? We talked without you, I mean, you want to?
Yes, I mean, please have questions.
We're just, I guess, a little bit nervous about getting into a fourth vehicle right now. Um, I guess we kind of all agreed that it's probably an inconvenience at times. But, I mean, do you feel it's an absolute need at this point, or is it something we can?
I mean, when Mike gets back from the academy, yeah, it's, I mean, we're good right now, but I mean, I can't really be without a vehicle. I mean, just like today, like last night, I wasn't on duty, I was still out, like, if I was letting somebody use my patrol vehicle, then I wouldn't, I'd have one. I don't really want to be taking my personal vehicle.
So can you designate one of the vehicles as your primary? And the other three rotate with the other two, or does that not work either?
I mean, we could, I mean, try it.
I don't know, or it just sounds like to me, maybe you're, you for sure have to be there most of critical things. And if you designate yours to just yours, um, maybe I'll try it, I don't-
Like sometimes we are our own backup, so if people are available in their home and they have their, they, they're not on call, but wherever they're calling, they come out, and Craven's done that before. So it would just be like, well, I'm the fourth person, I guess they can't come. I mean, I don't really want anybody responding to a scene in their personal vehicle, so. That's just the only thing, I mean, we do back each other a lot. So, I mean, sometimes, if the deputies on call are the one staffer or the one in Hudson, that's putting our backup almost twenty minutes out. And they're telling me to dress and go tonight and get it to us, so.
So maybe it is more of an inconvenience not having a fourth one than we have four. I mean, especially if they're relying on it. You know, take your pick, if someone's, say she's on call and she needs backup, but Erin and Craven are out and her only other backup would be Mike or vice versa or whatever, and the other two vehicles are sitting at their places. You got one without a vehicle and-
I mean, the vehicle too, like, it comes with everything, uh, the only thing that doesn't come with it is a radar, but we have a radar because we did that step program and they gave us one for free, so we have a brand-new radar upstairs that we've just done a thing with. So we have a radar for the vehicle, one thing we need is a radio, and I'd already talked to Tim Bass, but approximately, he said six hundred dollars, like, to get it all installed and get both radios in there, so that would be the only other, other than that quote that I gave you guys. It's just an additional six hundred dollars, because it comes with everything, lights, sensors.
Do you have to let KHP know, like, if they tabled it so they could?
Uh, he gave me till tonight because there was a waiting list and it was like seven months out. And then we actually popped up because I told him, I was like, I don't really have a preference on what kind of vehicle or color, I said, I really don't care. And then he called me, so, he wanted to know that day or within a couple of days, and I said, well, I'll counsel him till today. He said, he, since it was a week out, he would let me, but I have to let him know tonight, tomorrow, so. Go back on the waiting list, but I, I just wanted to go this route because if you go for a brand-new vehicle, I mean, it's-
I just wanted to look. Thought I had muted. Guess I did.
I, I think it is looking like a very good deal, Tori. I guess for whatever reason, I have very experience about having four vehicles, um, right now, but I guess I'd like to just give it a try and see, so.
Yeah, that's probably my thought too, for now. I don't have to agree, just for now. I mean, you, you'll be, still be on the waiting list, I mean, I'm just, I mean, like you said, this is not a lot.
We'll go back to the bottom, so. I got put on the waiting list back in October. They'll take me off and then I can tell them to put me back on and I'll go to the bottom, so.
It's my thoughts right now, I guess, I, I do, like I said, I think it's a, you know, a good deal, but.
Yeah, I think it's a really good deal, but with the city right now spending so much money, I'd like to wait, but I understand the necessity for it on your end.
So I'm assuming the consensus is to wait and see how it works out? Okay. Is there any other business to take care of tonight? I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn this evening.
I have a motion?
Second.
A second, all in favor? Motion carries. And adjourn.